Okay. The New Jersey Open Public -- I'm going to call this meeting to order, by any chance? The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and the Trentonian on January 7, 2020. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being videotaped for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast Channel 19, Verizon FiOS Channel 32, and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Do you all please join me in a flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to the annual reorganization meeting of the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education. If it looks odd that one of your elected officials is not running to start in the meeting, that is, one of the anomalies of this meeting is that the board secretary acts as the temporary chair until the board elects its president and vice president. So my first order of business right now is to announce the election results from November 3, 2020, where the only election relative to the Hopewell Town -- to the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education was the election of three members from Hopewell Township. This is one of the odd years where we only have members being running from Hopewell Township. Out of the 12 polling districts in Hopewell Township, a total of 15 -- there were a total of 15,232 voters. And amazingly, 11,313 vote ballots were cast. That's a 74.27% turnout, obviously aided by the presidential election, but what a turnout that is, 74%. Elected to three-year terms to our board was Andrea Driver with 5,112 votes, Adam Sawicki, reelected with 4,760 votes, and again, another new member, Anita Williams-Galliano with 4,627 votes. Welcome all of you to your three-year term as board members. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to move into the boardroom to administer the oath virtually to each of these three members from the podium behind Dr. Smith. So give me a moment there to move over there, and while the three new members, if you could pull out your oath of office to make it easier for us to move through this. All right. Are all three of our members ready?
Yes.
Okay, everybody should unmute for this.
Yes.
Okay. You have little cheat sheets going along with you. I'm just going to space this out, and you'll just repeat after me, and I always like to joke, don't say "state your name," say your name. And when I say solemnly swear, you can either say solemnly swear or affirm, and at the end of it, there's a clause that says "so help me God," and you are not obligated to say that. Wish to say it, you can say it. Okay?
Okay.
Let's get, we'll get started. I, state your name.
I, Anita Williams-Galliano.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution
I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and that I will be, and that I will bear true faith
and that I will bear true faith
and allegiance to the same
and allegiance to the same
and to the governments established in the United States
and to the governments established in the United States
and this state
and this state
under authority of the people
under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, state your name
I, Anita Williams-Galliano.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear
that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
for the office of member of the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education
for the office of member of the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education
and not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1
and not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS-19:4-1
and not disqualified due to conviction of a crime
and not disqualified due to conviction of a crime
or offense listed in NJSA-18A:12-1
or offense listed listed in NJSA-18A:12-1
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
impartially
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 and justly perform all the duties of that office
and justly
and justly perform the duties of that office
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God
Okay, great. One final task that we need to do. Because we are remote, there are some additional qualifications. So what I'd like you to do right now is to state that the form that you have read from and are about to sign is the form that I sent to you this week.
I affirm that the form that you sent, that I'm about to sign, is the form that you sent to me this week.
Okay.
I affirm
you just read to me, and the form I'm about to sign is the one that you sent to me this week.
Okay.
I affirm that the form that I am about to sign is one that you sent me this week.
Okay. What I'm going to ask you to do now is to sign the form, okay, and then just hold it up to your camera so that it can be captured on videotape. Videotape, it's just a videotape. Mr. Green, does this look good to you? Our attorney?
Yes, it does, Mr. Colavita. And I would just add, although it's obvious when you sign in, but we should add for the recording that this is being recorded.
Yes, this is being recorded. Okay. Since we have all of those things taken care of, it is my pleasure to welcome each of you to the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education to begin your terms. We can give them a virtual round of applause. Go back to my virtual location. All right. Okay. Just to clarify for the audience and the board members, the newly appointed board members, we will be collecting the original form of that document so that I may countersign it, and it goes into our file as per code. Okay? I have one final task to handle before we move on with the meeting, and that is the election of the president. I will handle the election of the president, and the newly elected president will handle the election of the vice president, and will handle the remainder of the meeting. The procedure will be as follows. I will call for nominations for the office of board president. A second is not necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote of each member asking you to state your selection for board president. If there is only one nomination, I will conduct a voice vote of yays, nays, or abstentions. Once a president has been elected, I will step down as temporary chair of this meeting and pass the gavel to the newly elected president, who will then conduct the election of the office of vice president in the same manner. Are there any questions from the board? Okay. At this point, I declare the nomination for the office of president open.
I'd like to nominate Debbie Lindthorst.
And I would second that nomination. I would say Debbie really did a stand-up job in her first year under circumstances we never had before.
Agreed.
Are there any other nominations for the office of president of the Board of Education? Seeing none, at this point, I will declare the nominations closed for the office of president. At this point, I will take a roll call vote of each member. You'll declare either yes, no, or abstain. Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Yay.
Mr. Sawicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
And Ms. Lindthorst?
Yes.
Okay. Deb, congratulations on being reelected president of the Hopewell Valley Board of Education. And at this point, I pass the gavel to you.
Can you pass it through the screen? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Colavita and everyone. I do have some comments I'd like to make. I'll reserve those for the president's report, and I will move on to the election of our vice president. I will call for nominations for the office of board vice president. No second is necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote of each member asking you to state your selection for board vice president. If there is only one nomination, I will conduct a voice vote of yays, nays, or abstentions. And so now, I declare the nomination for board vice president open.
I'd like to nominate Jess Grillo for board vice president.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Are there any other nominations for the office of vice president?
No, I would just like to concur. I think it's a wonderful thing for, you know, Jess to take over that role. It's a good thing for the board in terms of succession planning. I've seen a number of board members, board leadership occur on my time on the board, and I think she brings a lot, you know, a person of her generation. She gives a good perspective from, you know, younger families in the district, so I think it's an outstanding thing, and I'm glad to see her in the role.
Thank you, Mr. Sawicki. So seeing no other nominations, I will declare the nominations closed. Mr. Colavita, do I conduct the roll call vote myself?
I can do it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Yay.
Mr. Sawicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
And Ms. Lindthorst?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Grillo has been elected as vice president of the Board of Education for the 21th calendar year.
Thank you, Mr. Colavita. Ms. Grillo, would you like to make any comments?
I just want to say thank you for this vote of confidence. It means a lot to me, and I am looking forward to working with Debbie, and I think Debbie and I will be a good partnership. I think that we work well together, and I think this board knows that Debbie and I don't necessarily always agree on everything, and I think that's a good mark of a leadership team. So I'm looking forward to serving you all.
Thank you, Ms. Grillo, and again, congratulations. Now that the elections are concluded, we will move on and ask Dr. Smith to offer his comments for the evening.
Thank you very much. I first like to thank President Lindthorst for your reelection. I look forward to working with you. As Mr. Sawicki said, this has been a year like nothing we've ever seen, and I think your leadership and guidance and support has really meant a lot to me personally, and I think it's helped us stabilize the district going through these challenges, so thank you. With that, and Ms. Grillo, congratulations on your vote for vice president. I look forward to working with you too, and enjoy our working together as we have been. But it goes without saying that the future is unwritten for us, and the challenges that face us are many, and that we are going to work collaboratively, not only with amongst the board, but of course with the towns that we serve. And, you know, we, it goes without saying, and I've already said it, that the challenges that we faced over the last year won't end today, and they won't end when a vaccine comes online. They will continue to face us, and it will be not only for the rest of this school year, but the impacts on next year and the following years will be great. I do want to say, you know, we always begin by talking about the challenges, and you've heard me say it before, but I do want to recognize that we've had a lot of unique opportunities through this situation, and ones that we should reflect on and really take away from in how we can improve things moving forward. Things as little as, not necessarily little, but like back-to-school night, overwhelming response, and I'm going to put out an email, that parents felt the virtual back-to-school night was far more convenient, as was the parent-teacher conferences, or as were the parent-teacher conferences. So looking at things that we can, we can place into our function as we move forward and move closer to normalcy. The other thing was, I would like to acknowledge that there's some students that this has really helped. Either our students who have not had a positive social experience in our schools and/or have had some school phobia or some other issues, they've liked the remote learning aspect of this. So looking at ways that we can capitalize on the good things that have occurred through that. With that, I wanted to start on a positive note with the new year, but also recognize that there are a lot of kids and staff members that remote learning has not worked well for, and we know that the best place for students is to be in the classroom with the experienced staff that we have in Hopewell Valley. And you have my commitment moving forward that we will continue with our rollout of plans and looking at how we can support our staff and our students as they return to school. And as I mentioned, make accommodations moving forward to the rest of this school year, and if goes into next year of how we can better support our students and our staff members and our families. I want to thank again our families for their unwavering support of what we've been through and what we've accomplished. What we've accomplished has been nothing short of amazing, but some of that comes with, I think, an impact on family lives and flexibility. We know that, and we know that these two weeks of remote learning, or actually 10 instructional days of remote learning after the winter break can be challenging with some families. And I want to make sure that everyone knows that we're here to support them. We're here to support our students and our staff members. You'll hear a lot from me, particularly in this month, about mental health. We're going to be doing a, you know, maybe push is not the right word because it's something we've been doing, but a reminder to families and to students about the supports that are available to them. Starting with, in the next 10 days, our counselors will be in every wellness class for a five-minute drop-in, reminding kids that services are available to them, and more importantly, making sure that students know that a referral to a counselor for the benefit of a friend is not a bad thing. Students, counseling is not a disciplinary measure. If you have a friend who is struggling, please get them some help and refer them to the counselor. Counseling is a good thing, and I know that there's, you know, some kids worry about what it is and what's going to happen in the counseling office. There's no record of that. There's no disciplinary consequence that comes with that. So that's the one thing that we're going to underscore in the secondary level to our students. On the elementary level, we're doing something similar, but, you know, much more age-appropriate. But continuing along with that of letting parents know, letting students know about our Help and Hope line, all the resources that are available to our families and to our staff members. We have an employee assistance program for those staff members as we return, so making sure that everyone is aware that we're here to help. We know that in some levels, it's, you know, our return to normalcy is not moving fast enough for some folks, and we recognize that, but we're going to do everything we can to get there in a supportive environment, but also making sure that our students, staff, and families are supported as we go forward. A couple of things I would be, and then I won't go any further, but I would just like to talk about some community supports, and something that really began with the district conversation, but the three towns that we serve have really picked up, and Deb Lindthorst, not in her role as board president, but just as a community member, has picked up on is our food pantry. Our food pantry is housed in the old admin gym, which is next to us, and is serving a great number of families in the Hopewell Valley. And that's something that sometimes we tend to forget about, and often forget about after the holidays. So that's what I ask all of us to remember, is that, you know, Thanksgiving to Christmas are often the most donated times, whether it's food, it's really the time after January that people tend to forget about the donations. We're going to do that, and I want to give a shout-out to the Pennington mayor, Joe Lawver, but it's not in his, he's not putting his Pennington hat on this. He's really taken the food pantry to the next step. And I really would like to support the board for all of their supports, and not just focusing on, you know, getting us back to school, but supporting our families and supporting our community. Something folks might not know also is we're delivering meals to students on free and reduced lunch on a daily basis. Our bus drivers are delivering those to their homes. That's something that we're very fortunate to be able to do here, and the board supported early on, you know, back even in the spring, to keep our bus drivers employed and to keep many of our staff members employed. So I, again, I just want to recognize that we're very fortunate here in the Hopewell Valley. We have a tremendous amount of resources, and the vast majority of our kids and families benefit for them. But as we move towards this next step, I ask everybody just to recognize that there's some families who don't reap all the successes of Hopewell Valley, and that we need to look out for and continue to support. And I can't thank the board enough for acknowledging that early on and supporting our efforts and those in the community for all of that. And then one final note, I'd just like to note, you know, so that's, the one part is our mental health, the other part is reminding folks that our equity work does not end, you know, it continues over the new school year. And that's something also when, you know, as I mentioned, that donations kind of drop off after the holidays. When we don't have an event that occurs, people's conversations about equity tend to trail off. And again, you have our commitment, my commitment, is that we are making sure that we're going to do everything we can to continue those conversations and to move forward with everything. It was really, again, something that this board recognized five years ago plus, that we moved forward with, sometimes taking on a bold stance in some of our work, but really appreciate the board's work and support on this. The final one, as important, but I won't take as much time as our green efforts. Again, outside of Earth Day, not too many people focus on our green efforts in the district, but this is something that we're committed to, is part of our efforts and all of that. They are our things outside of teaching and learning that we do and we're supporting our staff, and we all try to do that in a respectful and financially sound manner to our community. But I couldn't be prouder than to be in Hopewell Valley. I couldn't be prouder than to work with this board. I thank everyone's efforts to get us this far, and I welcome our two new board members, and I congratulate Adam for his reelection for that. So I will stop talking now and turn it back over to Deb, but, you know, we had a lot of conversations around the holidays, and I just wanted to acknowledge a lot of the work that's going on in the district and thank a lot of people for all of their efforts.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you for your report. Thank you for all you have done to sustain us and to lead this district through a very challenging year. We appreciate all that you're doing, and I concur that, you know, I look forward to working with you in the year to come. There's going to be much to be done, but with this team, I think that we will achieve some measure of success and move district initiatives forward. Thank you for all those important reminders and, you know, for charging us to continue with the important efforts that have been set forth through our greening efforts, our equity initiatives, our mental health supports, and so many other things that we aim to do as a district. So thank you again for your leadership. First and foremost, I would like to welcome
If I could jump in?
Oh, sure.
One second. I don't know if you have the attendee list on here, but I would just like to recognize, I believe we have some elected officials who are
We do.
joining the evening, so I would like to, are you able to see the attendee list?
I can. I see that we have Hopewell Township Committee members with us here this evening. We have Kevin Kuchinsky and Kristen McLaughlin, and am I missing anyone? I don't believe, was there anyone else that I missed there, Dr. Smith? I'm looking down the west.
I don't think so. Some people just have first names, so I'm not sure.
It's hard to tell, for sure. But we thank them for joining us, and I know that they just had their reorganization meeting tonight, so they're doing double duty, and we appreciate that they're with us as well. I'd like to also welcome our two new board members, Ms. Driver and Ms. Williams, and offer my congratulations to them and to Mr. Sawicki for his reelection to the board. Please know that I am grateful for your service and your commitment to student achievement and to this district. Anita and Andrea, please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions or concerns. As we've discussed in the past, there will be much important work to be done this year, but year one of your term really is that time for you to be a sponge and take in everything that you can, soak up all of the knowledge that will be made available to you. Your fellow board members and I, and the district administration and staff, will be happy to help you with your transition and to provide answers and support as needed. Welcome aboard. I congratulate Mr. Sawicki for his reelection to the board, for his fourth term. Amazing. I thank him for his many years of service, for his leadership on this board, particularly as vice president and as chair of many of our board committees, most recently as our finance committee chair. Adam, I know that you'll continue to make valuable contributions to this board and this district, and will strive to uphold the interests of all stakeholders. I think it's worth noting that Adam's service predates all of ours, and he has been here through many of these district initiatives that Dr. Smith has mentioned, and Adam, we really thank you for your leadership on those important initiatives, and I look forward to working with you in the year to come. I'd also like to thank all of my fellow board members for putting your faith in me to lead this body in the year ahead. It is both an honor and a privilege to work with all of you and to be your spokesperson, and it's a responsibility that I do not take lightly or for granted, so thank you. I vow to work hard, to do my best to lead this board, to respect your viewpoints and input, and to encourage open and honest communication among all members. As I noted last year, I think we're really fortunate to have such an accomplished group of people serving on this board who bring a wealth of knowledge and expertise to the table. I thank you all for your service, particularly in light of the unique challenges that were presented to us last year and will continue into this year to come. We are all the more fortunate to have Anita and Andrea joining us, as they will bring their own expertise. joining us as they will bring their own expertise, wisdom and viewpoints to bear. This year we'll continue to challenge our district and all of those in the field of education. In speaking with each of you, I do feel that this group working collaboratively with our superintendent and our administrators and staff is poised to take on all that comes our way. Any successes that we will realize will only be made possible through our joint efforts and through our coordination with all in the district, our teachers, our staff, our students and families, our all important stakeholders, in addition to our, our community partners throughout the Hopewell Valley. We thank all of our stakeholders for their support, trust, patience and understanding this past year. Working together, I'm confident, confident that we will continue to make progress and will continue to be a high performing district. Collectively, I know that we seek to uphold our high standards and to succeed them. And again, in speaking and working with all of you, I know that we're not merely looking to maintain the status quo, but will continue to be forward thinking and will look for innovative and creative solutions to doing the work of this district and to meeting any challenges that we may face. I wish all of our district personnel, students and families, all the best in the year to come. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me or to any of my former, my fellow board members with questions or concerns that you may have. Thank you. With that, we will move on in our agenda and I will ask our board attorney, Mr. Paul Green, to lead us in our annual board ethics training. Paul, thanks for being with us.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you for having me here tonight. Delighted to be here. So we're going to see if this works and we're going to try and share the screen. Whenever this happens, I'm always amazed when it works. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. You never know. It's like doing a conference call. When, when it works, it's wonderful. So why are we reviewing school ethics? Well, it's a good idea, but we also have to. The regulation says that every board of education must annually discuss the Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics at a regularly scheduled public meeting. Many boards like yours do this at the organization meeting. The Act covers board members, NJSBA officials, school administrators, such as your superintendent, your business administrator. However, the Code of Ethics itself, which is in the Act, only applies to board members. So board members have the distinction of being covered by both the ethics statute itself, which has a variety of conflict of interest provisions, as well as a code of ethics. The only entity that can determine whether the conduct violates the Act is the School Ethics Commission. Any school official may request an advisory opinion, which we often encourage if there's a specific question that's never been dealt with before. That is not binding, but it is a very persuasive indication of how the commission would rule if it received an ethics complaint. Where you ask a question about another school official, which you may do, then you must copy that official on that and that official has the opportunity to respond. Who may file a complaint? Anyone. Not a board of education, because a board of education has been ruled not a person, but any person may file a complaint. There's a six month statute of limitations. And the sanctions for violations of the Act range from a reprimand, which is the lowest slap on the wrist, a censure, suspension as a board member, or the ultimate penalty of removal from the board. Removal is fairly rare. There are a number of items in the Ethics Act. This is the statute itself, not the Code of Ethics. So this applies to all school officials. So you cannot do business with anyone or any entity that would be a conflict in terms of your role as a board member. You may not use your position to secure unwarranted privileges. You may not act in any matter where you have a direct or indirect financial interest or some other benefit. You may not engage in any employment or service that might prejudice independent judgment, which basically means essentially very similar to the, the prior one about direct indirect financial interest, that it would have to be some kind of a role of employment that would really conflict with your role as a board member. You may not solicit or accept any gift in furtherance of any action that someone seeks you to take. You may not use your office for financial gain. And you may not represent yourself or others against the board, although that does not apply to when you want to deal with your own child's specific situation. The thou shalt, what you're required to do, basically, and this is your Code of Ethics, uphold and enforce in laws, make decisions in the best interests of children, confine your action to policymaking, planning and appraisal, very important. As we know, the board does not actually administer the district. That's the job of your superintendent and your other school officials. Basically, you are the policymaking and oversight body. Which comes to D, the responsibility is not to administer the schools, but to see they are well run. You recognize authority rests with the board, so you may not make no personal promises or take private action. And we'll talk about what that is in a minute. You may not refuse to surrender your independent judgment to special interest groups. I've bolded D because this is an area that oftentimes board members run afoul of and is often the source of an ethics complaint, which is the need to hold confidential any matters that if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. You will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel. You will support and protect school personnel and the proper performance of their jobs. And very importantly, you will refer all complaints to the superintendent. So if you receive a complaint, that basically has to get referred to the superintendent. And you will act on complaints at public meetings only after failure of administrative solution. Let's talk a little bit about free speech too, because oftentimes we get asked the question, okay, I'm a board member and I have this Code of Ethics, but I do have First Amendment rights. And yes, you do, but there are some limitations on them. So some of the free speech issues that we see. You do have a First Amendment right to express yourself, but you may not disclose information which is inaccurate, confidential, or has the potential to compromise the board. Members should always avoid publicly, excuse me, publicly criticizing the staff. However, as we'll see, there are areas where you can dissent or express your particular opinion. You may not represent your personal opinion as the position of the board. You always have to have in any kind of a public statement that you make in writing, a disclaimer that basically says that you're a member of the board, you're speaking as a private citizen, and the opinions expressed do not necessarily represent those of the board. Again, you do not surrender your rights as a private citizen. So that as long as your conduct comports with the Ethics Act and is not defamatory or otherwise unprotected, which would not be protected by the First Amendment. So for example, in the case of LaPorte, the board members were engaging in a political activity when as private citizens, they participated in a press conference to endorse a mayoral candidate. You have the right to do that. Statutory pitfalls that we often warn board members to look out for, confine the board action to policymaking, planning and appraisal, recognize authority rests with the board and make no personal promises, the confidentiality and support and protect school personnel. So what is private action? Well, that's basically defined as anything that's not board action. So if you do something that does not really tie into your role as a board member or is not part of the board's role itself, that's considered a private action. It must also compromise the board so that if you take an action, there must be some compromise to the board's position. One classic example was there was a board member who was serving as a chair of the technology committee. He sent a letter to a private donor requesting a donation toward the district's upgrades, which seems like a very legitimate and innocent thing to do, but it was not authorized by the board. The board had not approved the short range technology plan for implementation. And the commission found that this was private action because it was not something that the board had actually authorized. He, as a board member, did not have a right individually to start seeking donations for something that the board had not agreed to undertake. Facebook, don't compare your chief school administrator to a terrorist. That's a really bad idea. That violates the 18A 12 dash 24.1, which is the Code of Ethics. It was intentionally confrontational. It undermined the chief school administrator and was accessible to the public. In the SEC, in matter of Eileen Quinn, the board member distributed a flyer during a reelection campaign. It contained incomplete fiscal information regarding the tax impact of the board's budget. This was at the time when the budget was actually being voted on. And they found that the board member took private action and it compromised the board because the information was misleading and it was designed to have an impact on the budget vote. Dr. Vikner was a board member whose wife was a team leader in the district's middle school. During the budget presentation, the principal commented on the possibility of raising the team leader stipend. And Dr. V commented that the stipend paid to team leaders was low. And that was found to be a violation. Because even though Dr. Vikner's comment would not have any immediate impact, because an increase would be a matter in which his spouse had a direct financial involvement, that triggered the provision we just looked at earlier about not having a direct or indirect interest in a matter before the board. In Wayne Township versus Kazan, a board member joined a lawsuit to invalidate election results, which had rejected full day kindergarten. The board, through its, some of its members, sought removal based upon an inconsistent interest, a claim against the board. The SEC said, this is a lawsuit against the township clerk, not the board of education. The public comments were relative to full day kindergarten. There was no transaction, did not secure an unwarranted privilege. And basically, there was no conflict or ethics issue there. So you do have a right to certainly take, participate in certain activities. Making negative public statements against the administration or that compromise the board is not prohibited. As the ALJ in this case said, discussion in America means dissent. So you can certainly dissent. You have to be very careful how you do it, but you can do it, basically. But you're not stifled from expressing those views by an ethical code, so long as they are expressed in an appropriate manner and not for an inappropriate reason. So in another case, Davenport, there was a situation here where this, these are perfect examples of what not to do. Do not approach in question a building principal about a personal matter, which was so egregious that ultimately the principal visited her doctor and contacted law enforcement. So, you know, that was not an ordinary conversation. Made an inappropriate gesture and used a racial epithet towards an employee and blatantly disregarded the board's policies regarding the use of facilities, basically decided that he would tour the facilities on his own without any prior permission. So board members also must be aware of social media pitfalls and good practices. There are no policy requirements in law regarding social media use. However, like any other public platform, you can still wind up violating the School Ethics Act or committing defamation. And one thing you should be aware of is that board members are indemnified by law, which means that the district must hold the board member harmless if the board member was acting within the scope of the role as a board member. The tricky part is though, that if you commit some action that is clearly outside that role, you may find yourself basically without indemnification from the district. So you have to be very careful about what you say in public and how you say it. You should review the privacy settings on your social networks, exercise care and good judgment when posting content. When using social networks, you're advised to don't post anything that would violate any of the district's policies for board members. Uphold the value of respect for any individuals. Try not to make defamatory statements. Do not disclose any confidential information. Do not disclose any inaccurate information. You always want to be careful that what you're saying is accurate. You may not use or refer to your title or position when soliciting for a business organization. You must refrain from communications with a majority of other board members. Because if you have a majority of board members, a quorum, five or more members, conducting a chat or a serial email, you might actually violate the Open Public Meetings Act by having a meeting that's not been advertised. When responding to any postings or inquiries in which your opinions are being expressed, again, you have to provide the appropriate disclaimer that those are your opinions, not those of the board. Refer all complaints to the superintendent as appropriate. Do not post any information on a social network which has been determined by the School Ethics Commission to be a violation of the Ethics Act. Easier said than done sometimes, but very important. That rule of thumb is don't ever say anything online. You do not want on the front page of the newspaper the next day. And I would add, don't put anything in an email to that effect either. If you must post about public informations, remember to use that disclaimer that those views are yours. You're a private citizen. Your comments do not represent the board. Remember that your profile picture is always going to be public. So using a vanilla Facebook picture and considering modifying the spelling of your name, review your privacy settings. Be careful of what you like. That can really boomerang on people. Be careful whom you friend. Protect your friends from being found by editing the privacy of your friends list. Be mindful of unflattering pictures you are tagged in and seek to have that untagged. Again, refrain from commenting on items that may be controversial. Use good professional judgment when developing online connections and when sharing content through those connections. When in doubt, check with the central office, check with Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith can reach out to me. If there's some question, we're always happy to address any questions that board members may have in specific situations, because oftentimes these are very factually intensive questions. So a little quiz, you know, I'm not going to ask anybody to raise your hand or call out. You can just kind of go through this. And some of last year's board members may recognize some of these, but perhaps you don't remember after a year what the answers are. And we have a few new ones. So individual board members cannot issue Rice Notice. For those who don't know, a Rice Notice is a notification to an employee that the board is going to discuss that employee in executive session. That triggers a right that the employee has to request that the discussion be held in public, because that's a right they have under the Open Public Meetings Act. So that the, the name comes from a case, Donald Rice was the plaintiff who said, if you don't tell me you're going to discuss me, I can't exercise my right. The court said, you're absolutely correct. So who may issue a Rice Notice? Does that lie within the hands of the board president? For the superintendent only? The superintendent or majority of the full membership of the board? And that is correct, true, that individual members cannot issue a Rice Notice. You can only request that the board do it, basically, or the superintendent can basically do it. It is a violation of the Act for a board member to also serve as an executive officer of the PTA or any other PTA executive officer position. That is false. You may, as a board member, also serve as a volunteer within the community. You may be very active in the PTA. As long as what your role is, does not conflict with anything you might have to do as a board member, and as long as you do not share confidential information with the PTA, you have every right to participate as a volunteer. A board member who is currently a member of the NJEA in another district can vote on the final contract with the local association once there is a memo of agreement and salary guides have been developed. That is true. The Ethics Act, as interpreted by the SEC, prohibits a member who is a member of the NJEA in another district from participating in the negotiations, since there can be an appearance of a conflict, since presumably any settlement in Hopewell could potentially influence a settlement in that board member's home district. However, once the contract has been agreed to, there's a memo of agreement and salary guides have been developed. There's no further opportunity to really influence that deal. And at that point, you can vote on it. It's a conflict of interest for a board member to serve as a bus driver in the same district. This is a bus company that contracts with the board, not employed by the board. That is false, although again, the SEC warned that the member has to be careful not to get involved with students to any great extent that might conflict with the role as a board member. Board members violated the Ethics Act when they negotiated a new contract with the superintendent without notifying the full board or allowing any input from the minority. This was a very contentious situation in a school district that involved an election in which the superintendent's contract was up for renewal. And he had become kind of a lightning rod in the election and you had a faction of the current board, very much in favor of renewing his contract. A lot of the new members that were running, who ultimately did get elected, were seeking to not renew his contract. And so ethics charges were filed by the board minority. And the answer was that this was false. It was not a violation. That the SEC said that the board members were not acting outside the scope of their duties. In fact, they were acting within the scope of their duties to conduct the preliminary steps of getting a basic contract together, sending it to the county superintendent for approval, at which point then it was brought back to the full board for discussion and ultimately a vote. And the SEC said that was appropriate. They were acting within the scope of their responsibilities. There were no, there was no evidence of private promises or any kind of private action. And that was upheld. A board member whose father is the varsity golf coach and whose mother is the school nurse, this is obviously a very young board member, cannot participate in evaluations, personnel actions and or decisions regarding individuals who are in a direct reporting relationship to the parents up to and including the superintendent. That's true. This applies to any board member with a, an immediate family member essentially who is employed in the district, since there's an inherent conflict, since ultimately whoever is supervising that employee is ultimately supervised by the superintendent. So you cannot participate in any part of that chain of command. A board member who's a member of the CWA, a different union, cannot negotiate with local teachers' union. That is false. There is no affiliation between the two unions. There is no affiliation between the two unions, and there's nothing there that would prevent the board member from participating. There's no connection between a CWA negotiation, the SEC found, or if there is, it's very attenuated, and a school negotiation. A board which has six out of eight members who are conflicted from negotiating the superintendent's contract must invoke the doctrine of necessity. Doctrine of necessity is invoked when you have so many board members with a conflict that the board cannot carry out its responsibilities, at which point you invoke the doctrine and everybody gets to vote. But that's false in this case, because there were still two members who were available to negotiate the contract, and the SEC said that's enough to at least negotiate it. You would have to invoke the doctrine to actually approve the contract. A board member would violate the Code of Ethics by participating in initial interviews for staff members. That is true. Basically, the SEC has said that board members should not play a role in either exit interviews or initial interviews, that that effectively crosses the line into administering the district. They do permit, although they don't like it, they were very reticent about it, but they permit a couple of board members to observe the process, so long as they essentially don't really ask any questions or ask very few questions and cannot actively participate in the process. A board member may endorse candidates for the board so long as the endorsement is clearly made as a private citizen. As we've seen, board members do have a right as a private citizens to still make endorsements. You must, again, include the disclaimer to make clear that that's how you are acting as a private citizen. A board member would violate the Act by volunteering for the marching band, building props, repairing equipment, moving equipment, very limited interaction with staff and students. So that was false. It was not held to be a violation of the Act, because in this particular circumstance, there was very limited interaction. There was no supervision of staff or of students, and that was acceptable. You have to be careful if you get into a situation where you actually are very actively acting as a supervisor or a chaperone, for example. Not to say that you can't chaperone as a board member, that may be appropriate, but if it goes beyond that into very intensive supervision and acting almost more in a, an extracurricular advisor mode, that's a problem. Back and forth email discussion between four members of a nine-member board may constitute a meeting under the Open Public Meetings Act would have to be advertised. That is false. Here you've got less than a quorum engaged in it. We are permitted under the OPMA to conduct, you know, committee meetings, for example, with less than five members without advertising, because at that point it does not constitute an official meeting. Same thing for email discussions. However, once you get five members involved in an email discussion, you do have a potential sunshine law violation, which is why oftentimes when you get an email from the superintendent or the board president, it may say do not reply to all or DNRTA, because you want to avoid getting into discussions through the email chain, which could possibly violate the sunshine law. A board member violated the Act by disrupting board meetings, spurning attempts to get her to correct her behavior, serving in an organization which had a contract with the district, and unilaterally embarking on a campaign to rename a district school. So this was an interesting one. And the SEC said, basically, none of that is really barred by the Ethics Act. Just to read you some of what she was accused of doing. She deliberately interrupted meetings with public outbursts without being recognized by the president, insulted her fellow board members through the use of vulgar epithets, accused her fellow board members of a lack of personal integrity, repeatedly demanded reconsideration of a resolution. By the way, please don't do any of this stuff. After it was clear that the board had no interest in such a resolution, imputing the reputation of her fellow board members through personal insults regarding their families and ignoring the repeated admissions of the president to cease and desist, causing multiple recesses. And the SEC said, you know, it's obviously reasonable to expect that board members will demonstrate appropriate decorum, but there's actually no ethical requirement in the Act that you do that. So they said, sorry, but we really can't help you with that. They found that the organization, it was a, she was a volunteer in the organization, had no active interest in it, so there was no conflict there. And she said, if you want to unilaterally embark on a campaign to rename a district school, you know, knock yourself out. It's, you know, it's appropriate, you know, to, you can do that, and the appropriate responses for the rest of the board to just say no. So it was very, very interesting situation, and unfortunately, the Ethics Act, we get that question a lot, it kind of clears up the question of, you know, is it an ethics violation for someone to really be out of control like that? A board member violated the Act when she inadvertently replied all to the board president's email response to a parent who had submitted a complaint. That was true. Basically, it's a fairly complex pattern, but the superintendent was actually the complainant here. The parent was also a teacher in the district, and she was complaining about, to the board about the fact that the district had not locked down the schools when there was a shooting at a UPS facility in South Jersey, which occurred some distance away from this district, and local law enforcement said there's no need to lock the buildings down. And the superintendent went and pulled her out of the classroom and essentially berated her. So she complained to the board. And there were a couple of emails back and forth, and one of them was the, the, the parent complained a second time. The board president kind of responded to her, saying, thank you, you know, we're standing by the superintendent. And this board member replied all, claimed inadvertently that didn't mean to, because the, he replied to, the email from the board president to the person, the parent, had also included all the board members. So this board member said, well, I thought I was replying just to the board, and I realized this parent was also on it. And in that, basically, laid out a number of factors why the board member felt they should reconsider this. And the SEC said found, had disclosed confidential information that was part of the board discussion of the issues, which did compromise the superintendent. And they said that the fact that it was inadvertent is no excuse. They said that that's really immaterial to the determination that board members are very responsible for knowing where they're sending emails. So it's very important to keep in mind. And they only did a reprimand because the parent never shared this with anyone, and it had no impact on the superintendent. Otherwise, they would have censured the board member. Now, you can argue, what's the difference? It's just semantics, but there is a more heavy weight to a censure, and it does get read publicly and disseminated, so there is some embarrassment factor there, perhaps. Just to review, our board policy 0169 ties into this, which is the use of the internet. All board members should take a look at this every year. Basically, because of the potential for improper disclosure or breach of confidentiality, written emails should not involve confidential matters, especially any matter the board may discuss in executive session, and written communications should not include multiple board members with the potential that a quorum. So your policy addresses these key issues. Very important that you'd be aware of these. So that's kind of a very brief overview of what we have. If any questions or comments, we can certainly address them.
Thank you very much, Paul. Does anybody have any questions for Paul?
Thank you.
Very thorough presentation, as always. Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, please, no. Thank you. Thank you for being with us, and
Always a pleasure.
We appreciate it.
Deb?
Yes.
Would that presentation be made available?
It will. It will be attached to our meeting minutes after the session has been concluded.
It's actually, it's actually there now, Deb.
Oh, it is there now. Okay, thank you. It wasn't showing up on my screen, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions for Paul, we will move along. We have public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. When using a virtual format such as Zoom for a meeting, individuals who would like to make a comment are asked to do, to use the hand raise notification function to alert the board president to your intent to speak. The board secretary will activate your ability to speak by unmuting you during the public comment. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or may direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open. Well, I see a hand raise.
My name is Catherine Fulmer Hogan. I live in Hopewell Township at 101 Engleside Avenue. I just wanted to congratulate our newly elected board members. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm a proponent of diversifying the voices in the room, and I think that our community has spoken on this matter, and I am so pleased to see the work that Andrea and Anita will engage in alongside our incredible school board. So thank you all for your continued service, and yay, newly elected members.
Thank you, Ms. Fulmer Hogan. We appreciate that. Seeing none, I think we will move along. Public comment is now closed. Items on the consent agenda are marked with an asterisk on your agenda. I would like to request a motion to accept those items, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. I'd like to refer your attention to item number E4 on the agenda, the schedule of board meeting dates for 2021. You will see that we have all of the regular meetings listed, as well as the work sessions for the year that have been
Let's get a motion in a second before we discuss it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. But to, just for this item, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to request a motion that the board approve the following schedule of board meeting dates for 2021.
So moved.
So further discussion. As I noted, these are our meeting dates for the upcoming year. You will note at the bottom of the page that it says that work sessions will begin at 7:00 PM and that regular meetings will begin at 7:30. The idea had been proposed that perhaps we begin all sessions at 7:00 PM. I wanted to get some sense of feedback from the board on that, as to whether that would make better sense for everyone, and if that would, if that would accommodate your needs as board members. Any input? Any further discussion on that?
The only thing that would be an issue is we sometimes have meetings, committee meetings beforehand, and if it gets too early for some people, I'm fine with that, but I didn't know if other people couldn't get to a committee meeting at 6:00 or 6:30.
That is a good point, Jenny. We have held meetings prior to. Our Personnel Committee meeting typically occurs before our regular meetings once a month, and I believe we typically do that about a half an hour before the meeting starts. So we're looking at a 6:30 start for a Personnel Committee meeting. We also have done our Finance Committee meetings, although this past year, we did switch those to kind of the off Monday, which might be the date that we would have the work session. We were typically holding those, we were starting to hold those around 5:00, 5:30, if I, if I, if memory serves, on the off Monday from the regular meetings. So again, take that into your consideration as, as you think about this. Dr. Smith, did you have something to add? I saw you.
Just with the, we had a number of meetings over the spring and the summer, and there was some confusion by the community about 7:00, 7:30, because we did run at different times. So I just wanted folks to be aware. I think regardless of where we land, it might be beneficial to have a consistent time, but that
And I, and I had proposed the 7:00 PM, but perhaps the 7:30 works better for folks. I know that work sessions we typically hold at 7:00 because they can go longer into the evening, but again, I'm open to, to everyone's thoughts on that.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea to have them all at the same time, and I think 7:00 works, that works well for me. If other people have a problem, they get unflexible.
Okay. Thank you.
I like being consistent the same time, and 7:00 is okay with me.
Okay. Wonderful.
Where to be, I'll be there.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Anyone else? Okay. The, the other point of discussion that I had was that we were considering, for a number of reasons, we were considering moving the January 11th meeting to January 19th, which is the following Tuesday. As you will note, that is Martin Luther King Weekend. I know previous boards had asked that the meeting not occur, you know, during that, after the holiday weekend, because Tuesdays were sometimes a problem, but considering the circumstances that we're living in now, and that most folks would probably not be traveling over President's Day, over Martin Luther King Day weekend, we thought it might make more sense to push the meeting out so that we could potentially have some committee meetings between this meeting and that meeting, and get some of the, the work of the board done. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
What about the 25th? Is that too late?
Um, I don't know, Bob. Is there any sort of statutory reason why we couldn't push out further?
Uh, no, you just, you have a meeting and, you have a meeting, another meeting two weeks later.
Right. We have a work session February 8th, as of now, on the, on the calendar. But other than that, I don't know if there's any reason not to. It is a quick turnaround. And any other thoughts on that, or on the 25th as a potential date?
I would just say, like you said, Debbie, it would give us a chance to have some meetings in, in January, and, you know, I think there's some advantage to that, you know, probably especially for the, the new board members, right?
Yes.
Especially since we, we start, you know, pretty heavily into the budget cycle.
Yes. Absolutely. And I do think that it would allow for the committees to, you know, go through some of their norm-setting functions and so forth, some introductory meetings and so forth during that time period. I actually, I don't personally have a preference between the 19th and the 25th. The 25th would allow for even more time to schedule those committee meetings once the committees are established. So, you know, that would work as well.
And for consistent dates, keeping it to Mondays would be, the 25th would make more sense.
Absolutely. Yes, that's a good point.
Yeah. I would prefer they'll be, have the additional time.
Okay. So the 25th.
And the continuity as well.
I like the 25th, and I like 7:00, if we're still on that conscience.
Sure. Okay. Well, it seems that the consensus is that we could move to the 7:00 PM time universally, and that we could move the meeting from the, the 11th to the 25th. I would include that as part of our motion. Do I have to, to make an additional motion, Mr. Colavita?
Officially, you need to amend the motion.
Okay. So I would like to amend the original motion to approve the schedule of meeting dates for 2021, to include a change, a universal change in meeting times to 7:00 PM, and to reschedule the meeting of January 11th for Monday, January 25th.
We need a motion for that. Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Of amending the motion.
Of amending the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries.
You know, go back to your original motion.
Right. You have to, you have to
Oh, gotcha. Gotcha. Yes. So I would like to go back to the original motion. I had already, I believe, we're all, we're at all in favor, correct?
All right, all in favor.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. Thank you very much.
And that's always a feather for the board secretary when the board attorney looks at you and says you did it right.
That's great. Yes, I should have put a special thank you note in, in my presidential comments tonight to note that we thank Mr. Colavita for his patience and all that he does for this board, but particularly as he helps me as I clumsily stumble through Robert's rules. So thank you, Mr. Colavita.
Deb, you are at an extreme disadvantage in your presidency because typically I could be whispering things to you. Anymore.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I could use all the help I could get with this part of the, the job. Okay. Any items of old business to bring before the board? Seeing none. We will skip the review of board calendars at this point because we do not have our committees formed yet. We will take care of that next time around. And, and as we discussed in between here, we may set some meetings. Any items of new business to bring before the board? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to public comment session number two. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. When using virtual formats such as Zoom, individuals who would like to make a comment are asked to use the hand raise function. And then the board secretary will unmute you for public comment. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district, district administration. Public comment is now open. Give it a few more seconds, just in case someone's a little slow with their hand raising. Okay. Seeing no public comment, public comment is now closed. And with that, I will request a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. Thank you, Jess, for your willingness to step up. And I look forward to working with you this year and, and to working with all of you. So thank you very much. See you all soon.
Bye.
Bye bye.